First off, I want to apologize that I wasn't here on Monday. I was off on some travel for work. But I did watch the YouTube video, so if anybody needs to refer to it, it is up as of today. I couldn't find it last night, but it popped up today. Good two and a half hours long, great watching pleasure. And the other thing I want to do before we get started is just remind people that there will be general public participation after all of the testimony. So I know there was a bit of confusion about that and some pleas on Facebook and whatnot for people to attend so they could publicly participate. And that will happen, but first, we need to get the official testimony and crosses over with. Okay? John, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay. Thank you. As most of you probably recall that we're here, we had some additional parties that attended the last hearing on Monday night and requested party status. So what I'd like to do is just go through, I know this sounds like I'm taking attendance, but I'm going to go through here so I get some idea who's here and who's not here. You know, once you've been granted party status, if you're not here, you're not here. But if you never show up, you know, that really is an issue for you more than it is for anybody else up here. Mr. Brosman has the ability to object to anybody that he thinks doesn't fall within the requirements for party status or standing, basically. So I'm going to just start at the beginning of my list from August and go through, see who's here. There's one person on here I think we need to address. I've been told he's going to be here tonight. But let me start with Jennifer Pichette. Is she here? Okay. And there's no objection to you. Greg Hess. Greg, could you come up to the podium, please? Because Mr. Brosman, I believe, objected to your standing. And I'm going to ask, let me ask you, what is your address, sir?
66 Crestline Road, Wayne, Pennsylvania.
Okay. And how far is your address from this particular property? Do you know?
Yes. .6 miles. I wrote that as a letter to the attorneys who queried me about that on Tuesday and didn't get a response. I sent it to the township as well, did not get a response. And then I called the attorney's office today and did not get a response.
Okay. Well, this is where it gets decided. You know, it has to be decided, not by email or phone calls, but I know I suggested...
Really? You don't think someone should respond and just say that?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, this is where it has to be, you know, the final answer has to happen on the record with our court reporter here.
Okay.
So, Mr. Hess, Mr. Brosman, do you have an objection to Mr. Hess's standing?
With all due respect, Mr. Hess, I do. That is over a half a mile away, Crestline. It's separated from the immediate area by the railroad tracks, which is kind of a physical divider. So I don't believe that Mr. Hess, as opposed to especially the Radnor Township residents that are adjacent to this property and some of the others that are much closer, with all due respect, I don't believe he has a substantial and direct and immediate interest in this matter. So I don't object to him making public comments, but I do respectfully request, object to party status.
Okay. Mr. Hess, what township do you live in?
Trudifferent.
Trudifferent. Okay.
Yeah, I would mention for clarification, and I appreciate, you know, the respectful comment, and likewise for myself, I cross Stratford Avenue all the time because we come out on Crestline, which is probably no more than 100 feet above Stratford. And also, I walk down all the time to the farmer's market. So I'm crossing those streets that are impacted by the Hamilton Estate development, you know, all the time.
Right. I understand, but we're talking about 2,000 feet, right? More or less? Half a mile?
Yeah.
Six tenths.
Over 2,000 feet. So, you know, and everybody that drives by there, whether they live in Lower Murray and a Radnor or Trudifferent, is going to have a similar effect that you've just described. So you really don't qualify because of your distance from the site? And so, but, as Mr. Brosman said, you're certainly welcome to keep coming to these, and there will be public comment when all the sworn testimony is in. But we have to be consistent with the standing. So...
Okay. Yeah, no, I disagree, of course, with your conclusion, but that I'm not affected and not a party, but I respect your decision, certainly.
But you certainly have the right to make public comment. So with Mr. Brosman's objection, that's sustained in terms of your party status. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Mary Ann Mahoney. Brian Curley. Robby Weirman, are you here? Okay. Ms. Weirman, could you come up, please? Because Mr. Brosman has objected to your standing also, and your address is 101 Land Toga Road, correct? Okay. Do you know how close you are to the property?
I'm trying to look it up right now in steps as I walk, but it keeps taking me as if I'm driving. So, no, I don't know exactly how far.
Okay.
Four-minute walk, maybe.
Mr. Brosman, do you know what the distance is?
Sure you do.
I don't offhand. I note that it's a much further distance than the other people that were right in the proximate area. It is on the other side of Route 30, which again is a natural boundary. I think there's a lot of people much closer to the property.
Okay.
But I would object, I believe it's too far out from the property.
Okay. Well, we haven't, you know, we will map out, at least for tonight, you're still in.
We could reserve, like we did last time, maybe, until we check the map?
Yes. Yeah. We'll hold your standing in abeyance, keep coming back. But for now, you're still in the case. Okay? And we'll map that out before we meet again. Okay. Amber Levy, she's here, thank you. Louisa Handshu. Okay. 219 Sugar Town Road. Mr. Brosman, you've objected to this person, I believe? Is that right?
Yes.
Is that based on distance? Do you know how many feet this property...
That's quite far away, if I'm not mistaken. It might be the La Maison Apartments are down in that area. Again, across Route 30, pretty far away, nowhere near as proximate as the others that have been admitted.
Okay. Well, let's, well, again, she is not here, and we'll hold her any decision in abeyance, and we'll have to map that one out also. Mr. Shude is here, I see, thank you. Mr. Zari here. Stephen Roccio, R-O-C-C-I, are you here? 201 Bloomingdale Avenue and you...
Mr. Rice, I actually heard from him, he actually moved out to Chester Council. So he...
He's moved?
He moved out of it very...
Okay. Okay. Well, we have an email address for him. We will try to track him down and see whether he's, if he's moved, he's obviously out of the picture. But Peter Clark. I think you've objected to Peter Clark. He has yet to show up. Mr. Clark no longer is a party. You have to show up here, at least once. Sharon and David Willis. So I think we're on the list that is still up in the air and the ones that have been mapped at this point. So let me just, and we have mapped the Willises, Stephen and Megan Sherry, Cindy Hansen, Kathleen LaFarge, Mr. Serene, Ted Heimel, Margaret Rushman, Dave Satterfield, Kaz Holloway, Caitlin Silver, Mark Gado, John Clemente. And we've mapped those out. I provided that map to both council here, and appears to me that they all qualify, even though the majority of them live in Trudifferent. Many of them live in Trudifferent. They're closer than some of the other folks that actually live in Radnor Township. It's a distance issue when it comes to standing and zoning cases. So the names I just read, Mr. Brosman, any objection to any of those? Because you've looked at the map.
That's right. And many of them, as you'll recall, I did not object to. Many of them were adjoining or directly across the street, and others, we did hold in reserve, and thank you for doing the map. We do feel that the adjoining people, especially in Radnor and across the street, are the most impacted, but after looking at your map and hearing from a lot of the people, we don't want to preclude or try to preclude their participation as parties. So I'm not going to object to any of the names that you read that we held in reserve.
Thank you. Mr. Morley, are you okay with that, I assume?
I am, Mr. Rice.
Okay. Okay. So those folks whose name I just read are in as parties, and there's two more, Becky Nuttall and Kate Harper, are either you here? Okay. So these are residents of 427, 423 West Beach Tree, and both properties are over 1,900 feet away. Mr. Brosman, do you have an objection?
I did respectfully, as I did before. I think they're just too far away. They're on the other side of the railroad tracks, so I respectfully object.
Okay. I mean, following the same rules that we're applying to everyone, and again, this is just standing, being a party, being to actively participate, you know, both of those properties are outside the area that the courts have determined you need to be within in order to have standing. So for both of those properties, the objection sustained. And again, there's an opportunity to participate, public comment at the end of the, all the hearings in this matter.
Mr. Rice, there was Becky Nuttall, and who's the second name?
Kate Harper.
Thank you.
Sir, you have a question? You have to come up, please.
Gregory Hess, again. My question is, my understanding of the court's decision was that it wasn't based solely on your distance. Is that correct?
Well, it's primarily going to be on the distance.
I don't believe that, the language I read said primarily based on distance.
What language are you referring to?
The court finding when it created the rule, the one that you're referring to, saying that it's based on distance. That's not my understanding after reading the language. So I'm asking if that's the case.
Well, there's a presumption in the court cases, and I can tell you, they're not clear, but I can also tell you that anyone that is a half mile or more away, consistently the courts have said that that's not enough unless there's some particular special interest over and above what the general public would have. And when I'm talking about the general public, what you said is that you drive by there or walk by these properties, but there are thousands of people that live in Radnor that do that. So...
So we are affected if we are walking by and there is significant amount of traffic and we're at risk crossing crosswalks, et cetera? I would say that that's a definition of affected. Would you agree?
No. That's not the standard. The standard is you have to have something over and above that that's unique in order to, if you don't live close by, okay? Something over and above what the general public is exposed to. That's the standard. Not that it affects you because you drive by there. There's got to be something over and above that.
So how do you define affect?
I'm really not going to debate this with you right now.
Yeah, I can see that.
You know, it's because we have testimony that we want to get into with this hearing.
Sure.
And I understand that, you know, you're concerned about that decision, but I'm trying to be consistent because if you're at 2,000 feet and you're permitted in, then what about 2,200? Or 2,500? Or 3,000? Where do we, so I'm just following what the courts have said. This is pretty much a black and white issue, once you get beyond, I'll say, 1,000 feet in that area. Unless you have something over and above that impacts you, over and above what everybody else in the community is impacted by, traffic, et cetera. It's got to be something over and above that.
Okay. I understand. I guess for the record, I'd like to say that I believe I am affected and that my understanding, I'm not an attorney, but I've reading the court ruling and I've been advised by other attorneys, that distance is not the sole definer of who is an affected versus a non-affected party.
Okay. Thank you. Board, have any questions about any...
If any of the people that came in after we started are party or considering party status, you might want to identify yourself to Mr. Rice in that he did do a roll call, so...
Yes. Okay. So just tell us who you are. I think that's Mr. Ted Heimel.
I'm Ted Heimel. I was just a little late.
Okay.
Forest Lane.
Thanks.
Happy to be here.
Hi. Cheryl Lutz, Forest Lane as well.
I'm sorry.
Cheryl, C-H-E-R-Y-L, Lutz, L-U-T-Z.
L-U-T-Z.
T-Z. Thanks.
Spell your last name, please.
Lutz, L-U-T-Z, 13 Forest Lane.
Hold on a minute. You're not on any list that I have. So is this the first time you've been here?
It is.
It is.
Yes. I have three children. I'm quite busy in my work, and it's usually on a night I'm still in Philadelphia working.
Okay. Cheryl Lutz.
But you wish to be a party.
Absolutely. Yes.
What is your address?
13 Forest Lane.
Say it again, please.
13 Forest Lane.
Forest Lane. Mr. Brosman, any objection to Ms. Lutz?
Going by the address she gave, I think that's, you know, in between some of the other people I didn't object to, so I don't object.
Okay. Thank you.
She is in Trudifferent, I would like to know for the record, I believe.
Yes. I believe she said that, so...
So I came in late, but I thought you said my name at the end when you were going through the call. Anajit Serene?
Serene, yeah.
Yeah.
You're good. Thank you. Okay. So Ms. Lutz is in, and, okay. Any, Mr. Brosman, Ms. Morley, are any questions about any of the parties now? I think we have a, I'll circulate a master list, you know, with contact info after tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Brosman, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
All right. Call your first witness.
Rob Lambert.
Could we have the screens on? Mr. Lambert is going to put up the exhibits on the screen. And I have some hard copies of exhibits if people wish them, but we'll use the screen, and if anybody wants a copy either now or at the end, I'll be happy to hand them out.
Okay. Well, if you have hard copies for the board, that would be...
Okay.
And I think that, seeing A5, I'm assuming that you guys are going to mark and introduce this. I think we only have through A4 on the website right now. Could you get copies of any additional exhibits over to Peggy, and we'll get them uploaded for everybody else at the end of the meeting?
Yes. I don't know if it'll be by the end of the meeting, but tomorrow.
I just mean sometime after the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and hand out a copy of this.
Rob, we have put up Exhibit A5. Is this a summary of your educational and professional background?
Yes, it is a copy of my CV.
And can you describe your educational and professional background?
Yes. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Notre Dame and a Master of Science in Civil Engineering from Villanova University. I've worked in Radnor Township for about 27 years, almost, believe it or not. In preparation of this, I actually looked at how many projects I've done in Radnor, and we've been involved in over 400 projects in Radnor Township.
And do you have any special experience with regard to stormwater management?
Yes. My master's in civil engineering, specialized in stormwater management. We've done extensive work with stormwater.
Are you a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
I am.
I'd like to offer Rob Lambert as an expert in civil engineering and land development. Mr. Rice, I just have a few questions, if I may.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Mr. Lambert, what is your, you said you were a licensed professional engineer. What is your certification number?
Just give me one second. It's PE 060743.
Thank you, sir. And is that in, is that license in good standing?
Yes, it is.
And do you represent any municipalities, sir?
I do not.
So you solely represent developers in these kinds of projects?
Applicants, yes.
And how many single-family housing projects have you done?
Innumerable.
So you've done 400 in Radnor, you said, you've been a part of?
Yes.
Roughly how many of them were single-family projects?
I would say probably, I kind of think of it in the inverse, probably 90% of them were related to, you know, single-family projects in Radnor.
So about 10% multifamily?
Institutional, commercial, multifamily.
And about how many, if we want to stay with Radnor here, about how many of those projects were seven acres or more?
Given the size of parcels in Radnor Township, I could limit it probably to, you know, let's call it 10. I don't know a specific number, but there's a limited number that are over seven acres.
So roughly 10?
Roughly 10.
And roughly out of those 400 projects, how many were construction of over 30 homes?
I don't believe any. I don't believe any.
As you know, because of, I'll call it Hamilton I, the first conditional use, obviously stormwater was an issue for, during that, those hearings. Have you done any projects out of those 400 with more significant stormwater issues?
Yes. We've done larger projects with larger amounts of, you know, impervious coverage and stormwater management controls.
Can you state some of those projects?
Cabrini University, we've done extensive projects with dormitories, parking structure, driveways, gym addition.
Thank you. Mr. Rice, I don't have any further questions.
Okay. So we're just qualifying Mr. Lambert as an expert witness, and he certainly meets the standard in this state as an expert witness, based on his background and experience. And so he'll be accepted as an expert, and I think you said civil engineering and land development, Mr. Brosman?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Proceed on.
Thank you. Rob, for the record, were the civil engineering plans that accompanied the conditional use application prepared under your supervision?
Yes, they were.
And were the civil engineering plans, for conditional use Plan One, as we've been calling it, also prepared under your supervision?
Yes, they were.
I'd like to move on to some general topics regarding the location of the property, surrounding land uses, zoning, and things of that nature. Could we move on to Exhibit A6? And I'll hand out copies. Can you describe what this Exhibit A6 is, and then describe the location of the property and the surrounding area?
Yes. A6 is an aerial image with some overlays and notes on it, prepared by Glocken Thomas Panzak. In the bottom right-hand corner, you can see the north arrow, and north is actually, you know, true north is up in the upper left-hand corner. For purposes of description, though, I'm going to call north kind of to the top of the page, just for ease of description. So in the center of the page is a overlay on the aerial image of the proposed development. So you can see the green area with the brown buildings. That is an overlay of the proposed plan on the aerial image. Right above that is an additional overlay of the St. Onray development, which is currently under construction of 14 single-family homes that was recently approved, hence why it's not on the aerial image. So going from the lower left to the upper right, you can see Lancaster Avenue. And going from about the middle of the page off to the middle of the left is Old Eagle School Road, just for orientation. From the bottom left-hand corner to the middle at the top of the page is the SEPTA Railroad, so the MTRAC Railroad. Going roughly in the middle of the page, right under the letter A, is Eagle Road, and that goes straight down. So I'm going to use the proposed development as kind of an anchor in my description. If you look just below that, between the proposed development and Lancaster Avenue is Eagle Village Shopping Center. So there's a shopping center adjacent to it, just to the bottom, to the south of the image, of the proposed image. Working around in a clockwise direction from that point is you have the properties of Forest Lane going off on a, toward the lower left. It's a residential property. And then you see the word Grant Ave, or Great Lane, Grant Lane. That's actually the township line. The middle of Grant Lane is actually the township line for Radnor and Trudifferent, as everyone talks about where we are proximate to the township line. So there are single-family residences that abut the left side of the property along Grant Lane. And then you have Stratford Avenue going across the top of the proposed development, going left to right. And as I described, you have the St. Onray development, which was a single-family development in the R4 that was just recently developed. And then going over to the corner, you can see some single-family residences on the north side of Stratford Avenue. That was again a recent, relatively recent anyway, a development of single-family homes around a larger existing home. In the upper right corner, kind of catty corner from the site, you can see the Stratford Office Complex. There's a very similar office complex across Stratford Avenue, just to the east. So just to the east of the site, it's a large office... So just to the east of the site, it's a large office complex to the east. I would note, just to the east or right of the office complexes, is a density modification development that was built, it was known as Villa Stratford. I believe the name of the road or the drive that they have now is also Villa Stratford. So that is just off to the right, there's a density modification development there.
Is that townhomes in that development?
Yes, there are townhomes in Villa Stratford.
I'd like to go to our next exhibit, please, A7. As you did with the last exhibit, can you explain what this exhibit is, and then describe what it shows, please?
Yes, this is Exhibit A7, again, prepared by Glocken Thomas Panzak. This is a hybrid zoning plan. And I say hybrid because the, there's a dark line with two dashes going from the top to the bottom of the page, about a third from the left. And so that is approximately the township line. So to the left of that is Trudiffrin Township, to the right of that is Radnor Township. Both zoning maps were kind of seen together at that point. This plan is in the same orientation as A6. So Lancaster Avenue kind of goes from the bottom left across to the kind of upper right. The railroad, again, is off, kind of off the top of the page there, the middle of the top of the page under A, and then goes down to the bottom, bottom left. The property is identified in the center, roughly the center of the plan, is Hamilton Trust Site. Again, going directly to the north, you can see where the St. Onray Development is identified. There's an outline of where that development is. So I'll start off in kind of the same orientation of the zoning. So going toward the bottom of the page from the site is Eagle Village. That is a C2 zoning district that abuts the property all the way along the, predominantly along the bottom property line or southern property line. The green, and including the Hamilton Site, is zoned R4 in Radnor Township. So you can see the R4 includes the property, and then all the properties along Grant Lane are also R4, along with the properties to the north of Stratford Road. So Stratford Road goes right again across the top of the Hamilton Trust Site. Those properties are all R4. Again, that's the green color on this plan.
Stratford Avenue?
Or Stratford Avenue, I'm sorry. And then going again, catty corner to the site, is the Stratford Office Complex. That is the CO zoning district. And then crossing Stratford Avenue to the bottom, to the Stratford Office Complex, and the Farmers Market, and the Stratford Shopping Center are all in the PB zoning district. The, I'll note the Villa Stratford Site, while still in Radnor, was a R4 zoning district. Going across to Trudiffrin, it was, I believe, the R1 half dis, or, no, I'm sorry. I believe it was the R2 district. I'm not sure of the colors there, they are a little bit off for me. But a residential zoning district are on the other side of the township line.
And now I want to turn to the existing conditions of the property. We have an existing conditions plan at Exhibit A8.
That is correct.
And is this, as I hand this out, was this one of the sheets of the original conditional use plan that was submitted with the township?
Yes, it was.
And for the record, this was Sheet 2 of 14 of the original conditional use plan?
That is correct. Exhibit A8.
And we're calling it A8 here for convenience, but referring to this plan, would you describe the existing conditions on the property?
Yeah, so this is the same orientation as the previous two exhibits, with north in the upper left-hand corner. The existing conditions on the site contain several structures, or many structures. There were, I believe, six dwelling units on the property, various outbuildings, greenhouses, driveways, swimming pool, poolhouse, all related to the properties at the corner of Stratford. Again, Stratford is at the top of the page going left to right, and Eagle Road on the, going top to bottom on the right-hand side. Then we have, in the bottom left-hand corner, is 18 Forest Lane, which is a single-family residence that fronts Forest Lane that is proposed as part of this development. The existing property, kind of from an elevation standpoint, it's relatively flat. There is a, kind of a high point through the, about a third from Eagle Road. There's a high point that runs that part of the property drains to Eagle Road. The remaining property drains really to the bottom left-hand corner and out to Forest Lane, as the existing contours go on the property.
And are there any stormwater management facilities on the property currently?
There are no stormwater management facilities, aside from some small conveyance facilities.
And are there sidewalks on the frontage of the property on either Stratford Avenue or Eagle Road?
There are no sidewalks on either frontage.
And what's the status of this property regarding connection to public water and public sewer?
This property has both connections to public water and public sewer.
Does the property contain any watercourses, streams, floodplains, or steep slope areas?
It does not. There's a small area of slopes that are within the right-of-way of Eagle Road when they cut in Eagle Road. Aside from that small area, there are no steep slopes.
And that area you just mentioned, would you characterize that as a man-made or a natural area?
It was a man-made area. It's pretty clear when they cut in Eagle Road that the bank along the edge of the road was created.
And did I hear you correctly? I may have missed it. Is that in the right-of-way for the road?
Yes, it is.
I want to go over the submission of the application, and reviews, and response, and things, responses, and things of that nature. We mentioned that there was an original conditional use application, and I should note, we started out at Exhibit A2. I had reserved Exhibit A1. I have a full set of that, that I'd like to mark for the record. I think it's on the website, I had heard already. But I can hand that to you, Mr. Rice, if you want it at this time or at another time. It's a big, thick.
This is the, the full set of plans?
The full set of plans and the related documents that were filed in May of...
So it's the application?
The application, yes.
Okay.
I just wanted that to be A1.
Well, let's, let's make it A1. I mean, I have some of that already, and I will need a full paper copy. So let's just, let's identify what we're, what we're marking also.
Okay. I was going to call this collectively A1. The top of it is a cover letter that I prepared dated May 24, 2023. It was addressed to Mr. White, the Township Manager. I believe I had been advised that that's who I should file the application with. And it says that we were filing the conditional use application, and it, it lists out all the items that we were filing. So this package includes all those items. I don't, would you like me to read all the items, or it's just in the letter?
Well, why don't we do this? Let's just mark it collectively as A1. This is the conditional use application.
That's right.
With all the supporting documents and plans that are required as part of the application.
That's right. And I would like to note one thing. I think we stated it in the application, but the cover of the application says it's a zoning hearing board application submittal. We contacted the Township administrative staff and asked if there was a conditional use application form. They advised us there was not. We should use the zoning hearing board application form, but this was obviously a conditional use application to the Board of Commissioners. Noah, do you have a copy of this?
I don't have that copy. I have a copy.
Mr. Brosman, do you, do you have a third copy that we could make available for the public also? Okay.
And we can also make arrangements to, if it isn't on the website, to have it on the website.
Okay. Well, I think it would be good to have a paper copy here for the residents, anyone that wants to come in and, and take a look at.
I'm going to hand you another one for that.
Peggy, could you? You're the keeper of the, keeper of the documents. There we go. Thank you.
So after the submission of that package on May 24, 2023, Mr. Lambert, did you receive any reviews of those plans from the Township consultants?
Yes, we received three reviews.
And do you recall when that was?
Yes, I can get you the exact date. August 1, 2023. We received a letter from Gannett Fleming, the Township Engineer. Then August 1, we have a letter from Gilmore and Associates, the Township Traffic Engineer. And on the same date, we have a letter from, I'm sorry, on July 29, we have a letter from Rockwell Associates, the Township Arbors.
And I have marked each of these letters, A9A, and I'll hand up copies. A9A is the Gannett Fleming letter, is that correct?
That is correct. A9B is the Gilmore letter, and A9C is the Rockwell letter.
And technically, A9B, the Gilmore letter, as you called it, was in the form of a memorandum. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I'll go ahead and hand out some copies of those.
Okay, and Mr. Brosman, before you continue on, just so we're all clear, these three exhibits were all previously marked, the first night we met, August 10, 2023, by me, as board exhibits.
Okay.
So just...
I didn't remember that.
They're in the transcript from that night. So B1 is the Gannett Fleming review letter dated 8/123. B2 is the Gilmore and Associates letter of 8/123. And B3 is the Rockwell Associates letter dated 7/29/23. And we marked B4, which was, Mr. Brosman, your continuance request at that time of 8/9/23. So just, it's not an issue. I just want to make sure we, we have that they're all way back in the record the first night, so.
Appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, just...
Mr. Lambert, after receiving those reviews and memorandums, did your office submit revised plans in response to those reviews, along with response letters to the, to the Township Civil Engineering and Traffic Consultant?
Yes, we did.
And do you remember when that was?
September 18, 2023.
And I'm going to direct your attention to A10. Is this a copy of the revised engineering plans that were submitted?
Yes, it is. And it was, just for the, for the record, A10, it was a, it says Sheet 1 of 14 is the cover sheet, and we resubmitted Sheets 1 through 9 of that set.
And did these plans address many of the comments that were made in the review letters that we had submitted?
Yes, they addressed some of the comments. We also included two response letters that were A11A and A11B. A11A was the Site Engineering Concepts Response Letter dated September 18, 2023, in response to the Gannett Fleming Review Letter. And A11B was again a Site Engineering Concepts Letter dated September 18, 2023, addressing the Gilmore letter.
And for the record, is this a copy of A11B, A and A11B?
Yes, it is.
And here's A11B?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, that is correct.
I'll go ahead and hand those out. And could you describe in general how these letters? Oh. Go ahead.
Yep, please.
Mr. Lambert, could you describe in general? I won't have you go through them point by point, but in general, how did these letters address the comments that had been received from the township civil engineering and traffic consultants?
So we received the letters, the review letters on August 1. As you can see from this recent mission, it was September 18. We responded to the zoning and land development. There's, the way they organized the letters was, organized it with kind of sections of comments, where kind of zoning comments, land development questions, and then more kind of detail, plan-oriented details. We answered the zoning and subdivision land development comments with either further questions, trying to inquire, probe some of the questions they were asking. And then some of the more plan-related items, we actually said will comply for many of those items, just because we were waiting, hoping to have additional dialogue before we cleaned up the, kind of the smaller housekeeping items.
And did some of the responses and some of the comments relate to how certain ordinance provisions would be interpreted?
Yes, that is correct.
And you set forth information in reference to other code provisions that perhaps weren't mentioned by them?
Yes, as we'll talk about tonight, there's kind of complexity in the code and many different sections that apply, some superseding others, and that's what we tried to clarify in that letter.
And since submitting the responses and the revised plans on September 18, 2023, did you ever receive a response to the revised plans and the responses or clarifications to the township engineering consultant's comments?
We did not receive any written responses to our September 18 letters. At the, I believe it was January 3, Planning Commission meeting, we did receive some verbal comments back from township staff and consultants.
And that was January 3, 2024?
That is correct, yes.
And you mentioned you didn't receive comments to the response letters. I assume you also didn't receive comments to the revised plans?
We did not, no.
But at January 3, 2024, there was issues discussed by the Planning Commission and feedback was given on some of the issues at that time?
Yes.
Based on the feedback that you received at the January 3, 2024 Planning Commission, have further revisions been made to the conditional use plans?
Yes, we updated the plans and included additional response letters. We also updated the stormwater management calculations.
And I'm gonna hand up Exhibit A12. And we also have Exhibit A13. Is A12 a set of the revised conditional use plans?
Yes, it is.
And A13 would be the revised stormwater report, kind of that is based on the revised plans in Exhibit A12?
That is correct.
And A13 is the revised stormwater management report? Is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Now, it's quite lengthy. We only have three copies of this with us at this time. We can provide additional copies if, at a future date, if that's okay. So like we did before, shall I, Mr. Rice, give two to you, one for your records, one for the public, and I'll give one to Mr. Marlier? Would that be okay?
That's fine.
And when you prepared these, are there also supplemental response letters that accompany these plans?
Yes, there are.
So, Mr. Brosman, let's just stop for a minute here. And I don't know if you're gonna identify these any further, but just going back to A13, this is, just so we have this for the court reporter, this is a post-construction stormwater management analysis for Hamilton Estate dated May 15, 2023, revised January 31, 2024.
That's right. Mr. Lambert, put the cover up on the screen.
Pardon me?
Mr. Lambert, put that cover up on the screen.
Oh, okay. I'm shuffling the paper here and not looking at the screen. Okay. I just want to identify the.
Thank you for that.
The revision dates of everything you're submitting, so it's clear, you know, what's being passed around, because we have some other parties here that aren't getting copies right now, but we need to get copies to the other parties when it's time for them to ask questions.
Absolutely. We'll get them whatever they need. And for the record, A12 is dated May 18, 2023. This is revision number two dated January 29, 2024.
And just for clarity, it was a set of Sheet 1 of 17, and Sheets 1 through 12 are included in this submission, or exhibit.
And those are the engineering plans?
That is correct.
You're only revising 1 through 12, not?
Correct. An additional witness will be providing the other exhibits.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, that's A12 we're discussing?
Correct.
So A12, it says Sheet 1 through 7, Sheet 1 of 17, but there were 12 pages submitted at this time?
Correct. On the cover sheet, you can see there's a drawing schedule, and 1 through 12 are identified with the remainder being crossed out.
Thank you.
And the remainder are sheets in the plan set that are prepared by another firm, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I was mentioning that we have supplemental response letters that were to accompany these plans, and we've marked those as we did with the first responses using A and B. So can you identify A14A and A14B?
Yes, A14A is a supplemental response letter dated January 31, 2024, for the Gannett Fleming review letter.
And B, A14B?
Is a January 31 letter from Site Engineering Concepts. It's a supplemental letter addressing the Gilmore memorandum review.
So these two, A14A and 1814B, are additional responses to the original 8123 Gannett Fleming review letter and the 8123 Gilmore memorandum?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And they supplemented the September response letters.
Okay, Rob, turning to the proposed development, you've gone over the location of the property, the surrounding area, the existing conditions. We've gone through the submissions that were made and the responses and revisions based on feedback. And now I'd like you to focus on Exhibit A12 and describe the proposed plan.
So as we described it, Exhibit A12 consists of 12 sheets that is part of this exhibit. The first sheet was a cover sheet, and I'll go through the first couple of plans quickly just because we've talked about them. The second sheet was the existing conditions plan. The third sheet was a demolition plan. And then we get to the fourth sheet, which I think everybody's been waiting for. It's the proposed layout plan, a record plan. This plan, again, the orientation is Eagle Road is on the right-hand side going from the top to the bottom. Stratford Avenue is going left to right at the top of the page. Grant Lane is just, it's not shown, but it's off to the left-hand side going top to bottom. The shopping center is just to the bottom of the page. So generally, what's shown on this is the brown color on this plan are the proposed townhome units. The gray area are driveways, the tan are walkways. There's two different shades of green on this. The darker green is open space, and the lighter green is just really other green areas or landscaped areas. One bigger, more significant change on this plan, if you note that the, and I believe Mr. Hauder talked about it the other evening, was 18 Forest Lane is now proposed to be part of the development fully, that we would remove the existing dwelling there and incorporate that into this, into this property. And that was in response to some communications with residents. So starting at Stratford Avenue and Eagle Road, there's actually a sidewalk that's proposed along the entire frontage, so I've kind of worked my way out and back in again. So there's a sidewalk that doesn't exist today that's proposed along the entire frontage of Stratford and Eagle Road. We have two driveway entrances on Stratford Avenue, roughly in a horseshoe shape. And then there are groupings of the townhouses going around the horseshoe driveway.
And what's the width of that driveway?
28 feet. There are extensive stormwater management facilities proposed. You can see on this plan, there are dashed lines. And I'll just kind of start off to the right-hand side, closest to Eagle Road. So it is between Units Number 1, which is in the bottom right-hand corner, and Unit 38, there is a dashed rectangle, which is a proposed stormwater management system. Crossing the driveway, again, there's a dashed line that's underneath the five parking spaces that are shown with a striped area adjacent to the driveway. That is a stormwater management facility. Going to the other end of the row of 25, Units 25 through 28, so closest to Unit 25, is another subsurface stormwater facility. And then behind Units 13 through 15 is a triangular stormwater facility. And then out on 18 Forest is an additional stormwater facility that we've included on that parcel.
And this plan has how many townhomes?
38 townhomes.
And you mentioned the color greens, the color green on the screen, the shades, I can tell the difference. I think on the paper copies, they're clearer, but can you describe the darker green, I would call in the center of the site? Is that what you're counting as the required common open space?
That is correct. So the darker green area in the center of the site, there's a big note in the middle that says 26% open space, 84,807 square feet. And so that was the open space, the required open space. There is also, in the zoning table, and we'll get to kind of more detail, identification of the required open space of 25%. The 26% is proposed. And then in that zoning summary table, it also identifies that there's 7.9% of stormwater underneath that open space.
And another professional prepared it, but there will be a significant amount, prepared the plan, I mean to say, there will be significant amounts of landscaping provided?
Yes, there will be an extensive amount of landscaping.
And you may have mentioned it, I may have missed it, but was a connection, pedestrian connection added between the property to the Eagle Village Shopping Center to the south?
Yes. In between Units 4 and 5, there's a proposed walkway which will connect the sidewalk along the driveway, the internal driveway to the site, to the Eagle Village Shopping Center.
Now, this proposed development will be a planned community under the Pennsylvania Uniform Planned Community Act, is that correct?
That is correct.
And there's a note to that effect on the plans?
Yes. In the upper right-hand corner, there's general notes, and it's note number one.
And did the conditional use submission at Exhibit A1, did that include an initial draft of the Declaration of Planned Community for the proposed planned community that would ultimately be recorded in the Delaware County Recorder of Deeds Office?
Yes, it did.
We're gonna be focusing on the zoning ordinance standards for our conditional use for density modification development in the R4 Residence District next. Before we get into those specifics, can you confirm the other types of reviews and approvals that would be required for this project after it goes through the conditional use stage? after it goes through the conditional use stage?
So after the conditional use stage, we will need a, as far as the township, a preliminary and a final land development review phases and approvals. As part of those, we'll go to the Shade Tree Commission. We will have consultant reviews. We will have, you know, additional details provided and additional reviews of those plans. We will have outside agency approvals with an NPDS permit, a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System that's required when you disturb over an acre. It is a permit that's issued through the Delaware County Conservation District, which will review and approve the plans for the stormwater management and erosion and sediment control. There will be Department of Environmental Protection for the planning module review. So for the sanitary sewer, that will be reviewed and approved as part of the process.
And in addition to all of that, then the township has various permit reviews and permits that must be issued?
Yes. Once we're through the process, get through the final plan approvals, then we can submit our grading. Obviously, there's going to be building permits associated with this also, but grading permits will be required to be reviewed and approved.
And you mentioned stormwater management, erosion, and sedimentation control. So by both reviews, by both the township and the Delaware County Conservation District, does that cover the stormwater issues that would arise during the construction, but, and then after the construction is completed?
Yes, both during and post-development stormwater controls.
I want to turn now to the specific zoning ordinance provisions that are applicable to this conditional use application. You indicated, and as we know, there's properties in the R4 Residence District. Can you confirm that density modification development is permitted in the R4 District by conditional use?
Yes, Section 280-29B states the following uses only when authorized as a conditional use by the Board of Commissioners, and I'll paraphrase some of these. And then the sub-paragraph one is density modification development in accordance with the requirements of Article 19, density modification development.
And is Article 19 of the zoning ordinance found at Code Sections 280-90 to 280-100?
That is correct, yes.
We're going to run through most of those provisions, and we're going to generally go in order, but we're going to try to follow, order numerically. But we're going to try to, also the way the code is written, there's sort of a logical order, so we're not always going to go in numerical order. But turning to Article 19, Code Section 280-92, which among other things confirms which zoning districts permit density modification developments. Can you describe those provisions and how the plans comply with them?
Yes, so 280-92A4 says in the R4 Districts, the minimum tract size must be at least five acres. And I'm going to pause in some of these just to reference the plan. So in Exhibit A 12, Sheet 4, on the left-hand side, there's a zoning summary. In that zoning summary, the top line was the tract area size. The requirement was five acres. We have 7.487 acres. And then it says the density shall be a maximum of five and a half units per acre. About halfway down that table, the maximum density is identified at five and a half units per acre, which would allow 41 units. In the proposed, we have 5.08 dwelling units per acre with 38 units proposed. There shall be no buildings within 40 feet of an existing right-of-way line. So again, using Exhibit A 12.
Let me interrupt you. The ordinance says existing street right-of-way line. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Sheet 4, so both in the plan view, you can see the 40-foot dimension from the existing street right-of-way line. There's a dashed line identifying that 40-foot limit, and it's dimensioned from the existing street right-of-way. And again, in the table, there is the minimum setbacks, and it says from existing street right-of-way. The requirement's 40 feet. We have a minimum of 51 feet. And then the last part of the section says, "And 25 feet from any adjacent property line." So again, the plan view shows a dashed line with the 25-foot dimension from the property line. And it is also included in the table under the setbacks with 25 feet required and 30 foot proposed.
So that 25 feet is for the property lines that don't adjoin Stratford Avenue or Eagle Road?
That is correct.
Turning to Code Section 280-93, the use regulations for density modification development. Please describe these provisions and how the plans comply with them.
So under 280-93A, it says townhouses shall be authorized only when constructed, owned, and operated under a single ownership or under the Pennsylvania Unit Property Act. As we mentioned, it's a planned community, and we've included the documents as part of A 1. Section 280-93B, it says, again, this will be kind of broken up again, "Not more than eight townhouses shall be attached in a single group." And so looking at A 12 Sheet 4, we have one section of buildings, which is six units, which is the largest. So it's under that eight-unit limit. And then continuing, it says, "And each group of townhouses shall be separated from each other group by at least 20 feet." And so again, using A 12 Sheet 4, you can see that we actually have a minimum of 30 feet separating the, each group of buildings. It says, continuing the code section, it says, "No more than two contiguous townhouses in any group may be constructed in line, and each townhouse shall have at least one plan element on any floor which projects or recedes within the wall plane of the facade a minimum dimension of two feet." So all of our units actually stagger two feet. So we have a stagger to each unit, that one unit is either ahead or behind the other unit by two feet.
And you can see that on Exhibit A 12 Sheet 4?
That is correct. And then 280-93C says, "For purpose of this article, townhouses is defined as a single-family dwelling consisting of two or more floors, attached to one or more similar structures as part of a unified development." As we talked about, it's a planned community. And then in the upper right-hand corner of Exhibit A 12, our general notes.
You mean you're referring to Sheet 4?
Sheet 4, yes, I'm sorry, A 12 Sheet 4. In the upper right-hand corner, it was Note 3. It says, "Each townhouse shall have at least two floors in compliance with applicable height limits and shall be occupied as a single-family dwelling," so we would comply with 280-93C.
Code Section 280-94 addresses area and height regulations, particularly building area coverage, impervious surface, and height. Please describe those provisions and how the plans comply with them.
So 280-94A says, "The building area coverage and height regulations of the zoning district in which the property is located shall apply, except that the total area covered by building and impervious surfaces excluding streets shall not exceed the percentage of the building coverage and impervious surfaces established for the zoning district plus an additional 5%." So if we go back to the R4 standards, so 280-30B, under the R4, has a building area requirement of not more than 30% of the area of each lot may be occupied by buildings. So if we add the 5% to that, we're permitted 35% building area. And then under 280-30F, the maximum impervious surfaces is 40%. Again, we can add the 5% to that, so that's 45%. So going back to A 12 Sheet 4, the zoning summary table on the left-hand side, we have the maximum building coverage of 35% is permitted and 23.5% is proposed. And then the maximum impervious coverage is 45% is permitted and 42.9% is proposed.
And did you address height?
Height was the underlying zoning, which permitted 35 feet. Again, in the zoning summary table on the left-hand side, you see the maximum building height was 35 feet, and we're proposing heights that are less than 35 feet, less than or equal to.
And would these structures exceed three stories?
No.
This is one of the examples of, I'm going to go out of numerical order with the code sections, and go to 280-91, common open space. Can you please describe those provisions and explain how the plans comply with them?
Yeah, so 280-91A says, "Not less than 25% of the tract area shall be designated in the subdivision or land development plan as common open space." So going back to A 12 Sheet 4, we, I previously mentioned, the darker green color is the open space. It's identified as 26% open space. And on that same zoning summary table on the left-hand side, we had the common open space of 25% required and 26% is proposed. The ordinance section then continues and says, "Common open space may not include required buffer yards, floodplain, or wetlands." So the buffer yard, we haven't gotten to that portion of the code, but the buffer yard is along the residential zone properties. And so along the left-hand side, along Grant Lane, and there is one property remaining to the bottom of the page that is on Forest Lane. As you can see from A 12 Sheet 4, the common open space is not adjacent to any of those buffer areas, and so that buffer areas are not included. And as previously testified, we have no floodplains or wetlands. The ordinance then continues and says, "No more than 10% of the required common open space may be used to meet the plan's stormwater management requirements, and all required common open space shall be contiguous unless the Board of Commissioner approves otherwise." So when I described the plan, previously identified two stormwater management facilities that were under the common open space. The area of those is deducted out, and you can see, again, in the zoning table, that we have 7.9% of stormwater within the common open space. And then, as you can see on the plan, the common open space is all contiguous.
Now, Mr. Houter mentioned this earlier, but this was the section that was changed shortly after the adjudication and conditional use Plan 1. Is it your recollection that section previously read in total, "Not less than 15% of the tract area shall be designated in the subdivision or land development plan as common open space?"
That is correct.
So the changes included increasing the open space requirement from 15 to 25%, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it also regulated how much stormwater management, specifically regulated how much stormwater management could be within the required open space where it didn't before. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And the provision was added, "All required common open space shall be contiguous unless the Board of Commissioners approves otherwise." Is that right?
Yes.
I think Mr. Houter testified regarding some examples of how the size of the common open space that's being designated in the central part of the site here on Sheet 4 of Exhibit A 12 compares to some other familiar locations in Radnor Township for other open areas. Do you have any further example of this?
Yes, I think kind of coincidentally, there's a park on Lancaster Avenue, a township park, Veterans Park. That's almost a very, very similar size. I believe it was 1.9 acres. And the overall dimensions of the open space are very similar to what is proposed here.
280-91B is another provision. Could you go over that provision?
Yes, the provision says, "Common open space shall be land which is appropriate and in suitable condition for recreation, park site, school grounds, woodland conservation, or other similar recreation or open space purpose." So this ground is, as I said, the existing conditions are relatively flat. This will remain a relatively flat area that will be open. There are some, you know, existing trees in that area. And so it's very suitable for, you know, a park-like setting and passive open space, passive recreation in that open space.
And you mentioned previously, it's not constrained by features such as steep slopes, floodplains, those types of things?
That is correct.
And, I'll strike that. 280-91C is another requirement. Can you go over that one?
"The common open space shall be contiguous to the development and not be separated from the tract by existing roads." As you can see, the, on A 12 Sheet 4, the common open space is part of the main, is part of the tract and is not separated by existing roads.
Continuing on, 280-91D is still another requirement. Can you go over that requirement?
Yes, "Consideration shall be given to the arrangement and location of common open space to take advantage of physical characteristics of the site and to place common open space within easy access and view of dwelling units, at the same time preserving and enhancing natural features. Areas set aside for common open space shall contain no structure other than a structure related to outdoor recreational use." Again, using A 12 Sheet 4, you can see that the common open space is really central to the site. It affords easy access of all the proposed units. We are proposing no structures within the common open space. And we have, you know, the location of the common open space preserves some mature trees.
And is it in easy view of the dwelling units, generally speaking?
Yes, generally speaking, all the units are afforded views into the open space.
Continuing on, 280-91E, can you describe that requirement?
"Yes, 'Common open space shall be made subject to such agreement with the township and such deed restriction duly recorded in the Office of the Recorder of Deeds in Delaware County as may be required by the Board of Commissioners for the purpose of preserving the common open space for such use.'" And so that was part of the planned community documents, which will be recorded as part of this development, will ensure the preservation of that common open space.
And then there's a subsection F. Could you go over those requirements?
Yes, "Common open space within the meaning of this article shall consist of a parcel or parcels of land or an area of water, a combination of land and water within a development site, designed and intended for the use or enjoyment of residents of the development or the public, not including streets, off-street parking areas, and areas set aside for public facilities." set aside for public facilities." So as described, this is for the residents of this development, they have easy access to the area of land, we don't have any water, and it's meant for the enjoyment of the residents. It does not include any streets, it does not include any off-street parking areas, and it only includes, if you can call them, public facilities, the ten percent, less than ten percent of the stormwater facilities as permitted by subsection A.
And those facilities are underground underneath the open space in any event?
Yes, that is correct.
And would they interfere with the use of the land above for recreation or open space purpose?
They do not, no.
Interestingly, this section indicates that it could be a parcel or parcels of land to be the common open space, isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct, but we are going to have it all as part of the same parcel.
280-91G is another requirement here, can you go over the, those requirements and how the plans comply?
Yes. "There shall be a buffer of twenty-five feet along all property lines which abut residentially zoned districts, which shall not contain any road structures, parking areas, et cetera, and shall be planted in accordance with a plan, which shall be approved by the Board of Commissioners at the time of final approval. This buffer strip shall not be counted toward the common open space." So as I described, when we were talking about subsection A, there is a, using A-12, Sheet 4, on the left-hand side, along the Grant Lane neighbors, there's a twenty-five-foot buffer that goes along that residentially zoned property that continues out to Forest Lane with a twenty-five-foot buffer going out to Forest, perpendicular to Forest Lane, parallel to the adjacent neighbor. And then coming back from Forest Lane, there's a twenty-five-foot buffer that then goes around the single residentially zoned property to the right of the eighteen Forest Lane property, there's a twenty-five-foot buffer. The buffer then stops there, twenty-five feet past that property line, as the shopping center is not zoned residential and is not required to have a buffer. The landscape plan for the buffer will be provided by the landscape architect.
280-99, again, I've gone out of numeric order, but staying with the topic of common open space, 280-99 contains requirements regarding ownership and maintenance of the required common open space. Please describe these provisions that are applicable at this time to the application and how this project complies with those provisions.
So 280-99, ownership and maintenance of common open space, A, says, "Land development plans shall describe the plan for the ownership and maintenance of the common open space." Although we're not in land development at this time, we have included the draft HOA documents or planned community documents, which include the ownership and maintenance of the common open space. B, the plan shall provide for, A, dedication, which we're not proposing to dedicate the common open space, or, two, private ownership and maintenance. So again, we're providing the documents that are A1, that it would have private ownership and maintenance of the open space. And then, sub-paragraph C, says, "The Board of Commissioners may require dedication, easements, and/or deed restrictions covering all or portions of the common open space, and we require the applicant to provide for and establish an organization for the maintenance of the common open space, organized under similar to that required by the Unit Property Act of July 3, 1968, PL 196, and agree that such organization or the group of unit owners holding undivided interest in the common open space shall not dispose of the common open space for sale or otherwise, except to similar organization or group conceived and established to own and maintain common open space. In determining whether the organization described in the plan is adequate, the Board of Commissioner shall consider the type and structure of the organization from the standpoint of its capacity to raise revenue, meet obligations, and properly maintain the facilities." So again, it was the planned community would provide for the ongoing operation, maintenance, and ownership of the common open space.
And again, that would be owned as part of the planned community and maintained by the homeowners association?
Yes, that is correct. And then, some sections D, E, F, and G are really not applicable at this time, it really is for future maintenance activities.
Those provisions, as you indicated, are not applicable at this time, but they, is it fair to say they give the Board of Commissioners certain authority if for some reason the common open space wasn't being maintained satisfactorily, which we certainly do not expect, but those provisions give the Board authority to take steps to address an issue like that?
Yes, they do.
Going to a new code section, 280-95, which is entitled Site Considerations, these address various items in kind of a general fashion, would you please describe these provisions and how the plans comply with them?
Yeah, so 280-95A says, "Every effort must be made in connection with each subdivision and development plan to avoid excessive earthmoving, undue tree clearance, and destruction of natural features following our priority requirements. One, lake streams and wooded slopes shall be preserved." As we've described, we do not have any lake streams or wooded slopes. Two, the development plan must specify the means for protecting trees and other natural features during construction. So Sheet, or Exhibit A-12, Sheet 6 includes the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan. This plan includes tree protection, fencing, and then erosion and sediment control features during construction. Three, the location of trees and other natural features must be given first consideration in planning common open space, location of dwellings, walks, paved areas, and finished grade levels. There's actually, the common open space provides for the tree canopy, they have the portion of the tree canopy along Strafford Avenue, the preservation, and then there is a grouping of trees that project into that open space, and those are all being preserved. As I mentioned before, the grades are relatively flat on the site, obviously there will be grading associated with the development, but it was kept to a minimum. Four, landscaping shall be regarded as essential to every development plan, not only must natural features, trees, and slopes of the site be preserved, but careful attention must be given to landscaping of parking areas and providing for street trees. Mr. Panzak will be testifying to the extensive landscaping plan and landscaping that's being provided. Number five, seeding, sodding, and other planting shall be applied to stabilize topsoil on steep slopes and to enhance the appearance of open space. As we talked about, there are really no steep slopes on the site. And then Exhibit A-12, Sheet 4 shows kind of the green areas, and then Sheets 6 and 9, where the, 6 was the Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, 9 is the Erosion and Sediment Control Notes, which will address seeding, sodding, requirements of any disturbed areas. Six, street lighting shall not shine directly into habitable dwelling window located inside or outside the development. That will also be, Mr. Panzak will be testifying to the lighting.
This code section talks about, and you covered it, trees and natural features, there are really no natural features other than trees on this site, is that correct?
That is correct.
The provision in the preamble doesn't give any specific standard or any way to judge this, but there's a reference to avoid excessive earthmoving, undue tree clearance, again, it mentions destruction of natural features. Could you comment on whether you believe in your professional opinion this would be considered excessive earthmoving?
I don't believe it's excessive, as I commented, the site is relatively flat, there will be some grading to accommodate the improvements, but there won't be any excessive earthmoving efforts.
And there would be other types of development where there could be more excessive earthmoving if you didn't have such a flat topography, for example, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And with regard to tree clearance, the township has regulations regarding that, and it allows for tree clearance is permitted with certain tree replacement, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And Mr. Panzak will be discussing that, is that right?
He will, yes.
And you mentioned that during the land development process, you go, a project like this would be required to go to the Radnor Shade Tree Commission, is that where these matters are also reviewed during the land development process regarding tree clearance and tree replacement?
Yes, it is.
280-96, code section 280-96 deals with utilities, can you describe these provisions and how the plans comply with them?
Yes, so this, 280-96, says, "Every development under this article shall be cer," oh, I'm sorry, "every development under this article shall be served by sanitary sewers and public water supply." So the existing property is served by both public water and public sewer, and the proposed plan, Exhibit A-12, Sheet 5, shows, you know, proposed water and sewer lines servicing this property, so it's really gonna, serviced, just like all the surrounding properties are serviced by public water and sewer, this proposed development will be serviced by public water and sewer.
Code section 280-97 is called yards, I believe, and it addresses so-called yard requirements. Can you describe the applicable provisions of this section and how the plans comply with them?
Yes, so 280-97, I'm going to skip to sub-paragraph D, because it's more specific to this development. It says, "If a tract is developed and operated under the Unit Property Act of Pennsylvania and/or under any similar form of development and operation, the minimum side yard distances between dwellings or groups of townhouses, comma, in lieu of the foregoing yard requirements, comma, shall be thirty feet," and I'm paraphrasing, "thirty feet in the R4 district." So in sections above, so where it says, "In lieu of the foregoing yard requirements," I'll just point out that under 280-97B, it goes through all of the yard requirements with front, side, and rear yard requirements.
But this Section D, like dog, is saying, when you're under a similar form of development to the Unit Property Act, which is a planned community, this section is saying, "In lieu of those requirements, follow this separation distance between groups of townhomes," is that your understanding of this provision?
Yes. And I would point out that when we were going over provision, 280-93B, under Use Regulations, there was a specific requirement that each group of townhouses be separated by twenty feet, where this section is a little bit in conflict to that section, and it says that the groups, the side yard distances between dwellings or groups of townhouses in lieu of the foregoing yard requirements were thirty feet in the R4 district. So we've complied with the thirty-foot requirement as the separation distance between the units.
And you mentioned this before, but those separation distances are shown on Sheet 4 of Exhibit A-12?
That is correct.
There was an issue discussed about, at the Planning Commission, about the rear yard requirement, so I'm gonna ask you to go to 280-97B, like boy, the ones that you said were essentially superseded for the building groups under D, like dog, can you just run through these requirements of 97B, like boy?
Yeah, so 97B1 was the front yard, and it says, "No dwelling shall be located less than thirty-five feet from the edge of the outside of the curb." And again, I'll paraphrase some of these, I would note that this was not as stringent as, let me go back to...
A4?
Ninety, 92A4, correct, which required a forty-foot, require, a forty-foot separation from the existing street right-of-way line. So again, in this instance, we've used the forty-foot from the existing street right-of-way versus the thirty-five feet from the curb line. Under 280-97B2, under the side yards, it says, "Each side yard shall be fifteen feet in the R4 district." We used the twenty-five-foot perimeter setback requirement, which is, exceeds the fifteen feet. 280-97B3 refers to a rear yard, and it says, "The rear yard shall be thirty feet in all districts." Again, the way I read this, it was superseded by 280-97D under the requirements, but nonetheless, we did receive a review letter and comments at the PC meeting, Planning Commission meeting, that the rear yard was required for the lot, not for the individual units, but for the lot needed a rear yard, and we could pick which rear yard it was, we could pick what we were going to designate as a rear yard. We chose to designate the Grant Lane side of the property as a rear yard in this instance. And then...
So is that now shown on A-12, Sheet 4, a thirty-feet rear yard requirement on that property line, that was something that was added to this A-12 based on the feedback received on the Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, that is correct. So that, the line adjacent to Grant Lane has, has three different designations to it when you look at A-2, A-12, Sheet 4. It has the twenty-five-foot perimeter setback as required, it has a twenty-five-foot buffer requirement, and it has a thirty-foot rear yard requirement identified on the plan.
And I think it's pretty clear on the plans, but for the record, this, this proposed plan has no accessory structures or buildings proposed?
That is correct.
280-98 is another part of the density modification provisions, its heading is Housing. Please describe those provisions and how the plans satisfy those provisions that are applicable.
280-98 is Housing, Sub-Paragraph A, "All housing shall be designed with regard to topography and natural features of the site, the effects of prevailing winds, seasonal temperature, and hours of sunlight on the physical layout and form of the proposed land use and building..." physical layout and form of the proposed land use and buildings shall be taken into account. As we've discussed, the topography, there's limited topography on the site. There's limited natural features. We do have some trees that we talked about in preservation. This region does not have very strong prevailing winds. And then seasonal temperatures and hours of sunlight is, the modern-day building codes really take into account seasonal temperatures with heating and air conditioning in the dwellings. B, 28098B...
Before you leave that, just for the record, it would be obvious to most people, but these townhome units will have heating and air conditioning?
Yes, they will.
And with regard to sunlight, is the fact that the site is open with large green areas, separation between the units and adjoining track line, lines, does that, you know, prevent sunlight from having an effect, you know, casting large shadows, things like that?
Correct. And the height of the buildings proposed, there won't be long, you know, shadow lines from a really tall building.
In fact, the 35 feet that's permitted for density modification, that's pretty much the height of any single-family dwelling that's permitted, even in the more strict zoning districts in Radnor. Is that right?
That is, I believe, the permitted height in most districts.
Even for a single-family detached dwelling, is that right?
That is correct.
And you mentioned our area isn't known for strong prevailing winds. I know, of course, climate change is a topic, but as compared to other areas, does our area see large seasonal temperature differences as compared to other areas?
You know, we do have hot days and cold days, but the building, you know, codes address, you know, insulation to address the, you know, fluctuations in temperatures.
And there's a section 28098B. Could you go over that provision?
Yep. It says, "Variations in setbacks shall be provided when practical for housing fronting on streets." So we talked about the variation, kind of the front-back two-foot variance between units. So going along, I'll start along Eagle Road to the...
Are you on A...
A12 Sheet 4. Starting in the bottom right along Eagle Road, you have, I believe it's Unit 1. I just have a, Unit 1. So you have kind of green space, you have Unit 1. You have a larger area of green space, and then you have the block of units 33 through 38. Those will also have variation along the facade facing Eagle Road. And then when you turn on Eagle Road onto Stratford Avenue, you would make a left, and you have Unit 33, which would face Stratford. And then you have the proposed driveway. And then Unit 32 has a slight variation to the setback from Unit 33. And you have the large common open space in the center. And then Unit 21 has a different setback than Unit 20, which is on the other side of the common driveway.
And there's a general provision, this is duplicated, I believe, with slightly different wording, and other provisions. At 28098C, could you go over that provision?
Yeah, so this provision says, "Adequate vehicular and pedestrian access and parking areas shall be provided without creating nuisances or distracting from privacy." I think one thing we didn't talk about when we talked about the plan is, each one of the units is proposed to have a two-car garage within the unit, whose space is 19 feet wide by 20 feet long, which would comply with the township parking size standards. And then there's common parking in two locations. So one in the, using A12 Sheet 4, one area that's adjacent to the common driveway, there are five parking spaces in the lower right of the, just outside of the common open space. And then in the lower left, there are five parking spaces, again, in the lower left of the common open space. For pedestrian access, we talked about the proposed sidewalk that doesn't exist today along Stratford Avenue and Eagle Road. We also have a sidewalk along the internal driveway and a pedestrian connection over to the Eagle Village Shopping Center.
This provision doesn't provide any guidance on what it means for these to create a nuisance or detract from privacy, but in your professional opinion, will the vehicular and pedestrian access and internal parking areas run afoul of those general provisions?
No, they will not.
Since you mentioned parking, it's not specifically in the density modification requirements, but the zoning ordinance, as many zoning ordinances do, does require certain minimum parking requirements for different types of uses. Can you go over the code sections that provide the code-required parking that is needed for a density modification development like this?
Yeah, so Section 280103B1 is dwellings. There shall be two spaces per dwelling unit. And if you look at the bottom of Exhibit A12 Sheet 4, there's a parking summary table roughly in the center of the page. It identifies the code section with two spaces per unit. With 38 units proposed, that would require 76 parking spaces. In addition to that, there's a subdivision in Land Development Code Section 25529A20. Just want to pull up the language. Which says, "Where semi-attached, attached, or multiple dwellings are proposed and where private garages or driveways are proposed to be used to meet the off-street parking requirements, one parking space per four dwelling units of overflow off-street parking shall be provided. Such parking may be located either in a public parking facility or on individual lots." And so the, going back to the table, so we had one space per four units. 38 units would require nine and a half parking spaces, rounding that up to 10 is what is proposed. So going back to the plan view of A12 Sheet 4, we had two parking spaces in each garage space for each dwelling unit, meeting the code requirement. In addition, the driveway aprons have a space that is actually compliant with the township code for two parking spaces. We did not count the drive, you know, the unit driveway spaces. And then for the 10 overflow off-street spaces as required by the code, we identified the five spaces on the bottom left of the common open space area and to the bottom right of those off-street parking spaces. And those are on the main lot of the development.
You mentioned the driveways. We may get to this, but there was a modification made there based on comments received in the review letters and in the Planning Commission meeting, but can you point out, you mentioned that they accommodated two cars, but do the plans contain the dimensions to show that?
Yes, there are typical dimensions proposed on the plan in various locations. For instance, in front of Unit 6, it shows a width of 19 feet for the driveway. And for Unit 7, it shows a depth of 20 feet from the backface of the sidewalk to the unit. The review comment, there was a concern that the space previously was slightly shorter, that a car could overhang the sidewalk. So to address that comment, we've increased the length of the driveway apron.
And one of the review comments in the Gilmore letter, I believe, also asked to make the driveways beyond just the sidewalk comment accommodate the two cars, even though that wasn't a code requirement, and that was done as well?
Yes, before they were 18 feet wide, and now we show the driveways as 19 feet wide.
And what's the math on that? What's one space required to be in the Radnor code?
The Radnor code requires a nine-foot, six-inch wide space by 20 feet long, and so having two adjacent would require 19-foot width.
Code section 28100...
One quick, the Radnor parking space size is nine and a half feet by...
20. Correct.
Okay, so, all right, and the width, the width that I'm looking at on A12 is 19 feet wide, so...
So that's two spaces parallel, nine and a half and nine and a half is 19.
You going to be able to open the doors if they're both parked there?
That, your code requirement is nine and a half for the clear...
I'm just asking you a practical question.
Practical question, yes.
Okay.
Yes. The nine and a half is a wide parking space as far as local codes go. Local codes, a lot of them are nine feet. Some have compact that are smaller. So nine and a half is a wide parking space. And that is from 284, which is the definitions under parking space. An outdoor space or a garage space used for parking motor vehicles, which shall measure not less than nine feet, six inches by 20 feet, is...
So all the parking, parking driveways are 19 by 20? Is that, do they bear...
Correct. The driveway accessing the garage space is 19 by 20. We're not counting those as required parking spaces.
Right.
It's just extra area.
You count the garages, though, as parking?
We're counting the garages as the parking space.
Okay.
Good to move on?
Sure.
There's Code Section 28100. It lists items that are to be submitted to the township in connection with a conditional use application for density modification development. Please describe these provisions and how the plans and the conditional use application materials that have been submitted satisfy the, these provisions, the applicable ones of this section.
Yeah, so 28100, the section starts at, well, it had A, but I'm going to jump to B because that's where it creates the list. It says, "In addition, the following information shall be submitted to the township." One was the nature of the landowner's interest in the land to be developed. That was included in A1 showing the trust ownership of the property. Two, the density of the land used to be allocated to the site and to be developed. Sheet A12, Sheet 4, the zoning summary shows both the area and the density of the development. B3 says, "Location and size of the common open space and the form of the organization proposed to own and maintain the common open space." So I think we covered this in testimony. We've identified on A12 Sheet 4, the location and size of the common open space, and A1 included the form of organization proposed to own and maintain. B4, it says, "The use and approximate height, bulk, and location of dwellings and other structures." Again, I go back to A12 Sheet 4. Proposes the configuration of the dwellings, and the zoning table and notes include the bulk area, the height and the bulk area requirements of the ordinance. B5 says, "The feasibility of proposals for the disposition of sanitary waste and stormwater and provisions of public water supply." So as part of Exhibit A1, we have included a Aqua Will Serve letter, which is from Aqua, Pennsylvania, saying they will provide water to service the facility. Part of A1 was a planning module application that we have filled out for the sanitary sewer. And then we had Exhibit A13. A1 included a stormwater report. We have revised that stormwater report based on different configurations, and so A13 included the revised stormwater report for that.
In addition to the reports that were submitted, do the plans include conceptual plans for sanitary sewer and public water?
Yes, they do. Exhibit A12 Sheet 5 shows proposed water mains and sewer mains to service all of the units.
And these are public?
Yes, they would be public water and public sewer. A12 Sheet 5 also shows the stormwater management facilities.
In your professional opinion, will it be feasible to service the property with both sanitary sewer service and public water service?
Yes, just like, you know, all of the surrounding properties are serviced with public water and sewer.
And as you noted, this property is already served in that manner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you explain how public sanitary sewer service for new development is typically handled in Radnor Township?
Yeah, so we would file a, currently for a project of this size, you have to file a planning module. That is typically submitted along with our preliminary plan. It gets processed throughout the land development process, not to use "process" twice, but during the land development, the planning module continues to go through a review and approvals. Many projects have been issued conditional final approval based on receiving a planning module, depending on when it comes in, but that is the typical process.
Now, you mentioned it's typical you've seen for preliminary land development plans to include a sewer planning module, but in fact, the subdivision in Land Development Ordinance at 25521B doesn't seem to require a planning module until the time of final land development. Is that your understanding of those code provisions?
Yes. It's common practice, though, to file it sooner because they take a long time to process typically, and we file them sooner in the process just to begin the approval.
And that subdivision in Land Development Ordinance 25521B, again, referencing a final land development plan, does that confirm at subsection 3A that that's a final land development plan requirement, a public sanitary sewer facility plan?
Yes, it does.
And that same section, 25521BD, like dog, that indicates a final plan would have a horizontal plan for sanitary sewers?
Yes.
And 25521B, like boy, E, like Edward, there's a requirement for a final land development plan to have sanitary sewer profiles?
That is correct, yes.
And you mentioned this, but just in case I missed it, even though it's not technically required until the final land development plan stage, and it's typically done at preliminary land development, did the conditional use application that we submitted at Exhibit A1 include a sewer planning module package that was prepared by Hillbeck? That's H.I.L.B.E.C. engineering?
Yes.
And that would address sanitary sewer proposal in greater detail?
Yes, it would.
And that would be, as I said, reviewed during land development?
That is correct.
So this section, as you indicated, talked about stormwater management. That's a big topic, as we know. So we're gonna cover that in greater detail. So I'd like to move on from the, to the next section, 28100B. We're going down the list. We've worked through 1 through 5. Holding, you addressed stormwater management in that testimony, but we're gonna provide more. Can you go to subsection 6?
Yeah, so 6 says the substance of covenants, grants of easements, or other restrictions proposed to be imposed upon the use of the land, buildings, and structures, including proposed easements or grants for public utilities. Again, those were included in Exhibit A1. 7 says a provision for parking of vehicles and the location and width of proposed streets and public ways. We're not proposing any streets or public ways. And we have, you know, the internal parking that we just went over for the parking requirements. 8 was a statement which shall, which will show the ecological and economic impact of the development of the township and especially as to the surrounding areas. We will have another witness talk about the fiscal impact study, and there was, A1 included comments on the ecological. In addition, we have the plan set in A12, which shows the grading, erosion, sediment control, stormwater improvements to the property.
And we will also have landscape plans that cover, you might say, ecological issues in dealing with tree replacement and other proposed landscaping?
Yes, that is correct. And then number 9 is the result...
Before you leave that, if I missed it, I'm sorry, but in the package we submitted at Exhibit A1, there was also a development impact statement that covered various topics that may have also addressed these as well, is that right?
Yes, it was in great detail.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt, you were going on to number 9.
Number 9, the results of traffic studies taken on the surrounding and nearby roads. There will be a witness that has performed a traffic study and will testify to that.
Mr. Brozeman. I'm gonna take about a 10-minute break before you move on to the next topic.
Break sounds good.
And then discuss how long we're gonna go tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, 10 minutes, and we'll be...
So I think given the time of the evening and everyone's starting to look pretty blurred out there, and poor Norma's been typing up a storm, we're probably gonna need to call it quits. And it's gonna take us some time here to figure out some more dates. So once John comes up with the room schedule, we'll see what we can find. Sorry, Rob, to cut you off in the middle of your testimony, but I think you had at least an hour more to go.
Happy to continue.
Okay.
I didn't put everybody asleep.
It'll also give people some time. Everything will get up on the website. You can actually look at these and see them, rather than being just a blur up on the screen. And that way, you'll come in better informed for the next time. Yes, we will have some hard copies available if people don't feel like they're comfortable enough with the technology to look at their computers.
Where would they be available? Where would they get them?
Where will you keep those?
We will have the hard copy that George gave us. They can come to my office.
Okay, so second floor Township Building.
Let me just start with some dates that I know the meeting room is open.
Mr. Rys, are we going off the record at this point, or are we staying on?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have this off the record till we decide. And then we'll go back on. And so I have February 15th, which is a Thursday, as an available date.
John, before you throw out the dates, can I get a sense from you, Mr. Brosman, about how many more nights you're predicting? I know I will not hold you to it. But as we're picking dates, how many dates do you think we should be choosing?
I can't speak for Mr. Marlier, because he may have times he wants. But I'm thinking two to three more. Do you think that's in the realm of-
For Mr. Lambert alone? I'm being serious. I mean, two to three for all your witnesses?
Yeah, but maybe I'm an optimist. Or you're telling me you're gonna ask a lot of questions?
I'll certainly be asking some questions.
Let's start with pick at least two.
Yeah, February 15th is the first one.
We could, we can't do that.
You can't do the 15th.
Can you bring another witness, Mr. Brosman, that night?
I couldn't do it.
You could?
Not for Mr. Lambert.
No, but another one of your witnesses.
One of the other experts sitting in the second row there. Because we're gonna have an issue with, you know, witnesses and board members. I've got some conflicts. You have some conflicts. Mr. Marlier might have conflict, so-
I think we could. I don't have that, well- Are you okay on the 15th?
Yeah.
It looks like I might be able to have two witnesses that night.
Let's use the time that we have, you know, and we can-
Do you know who they'll be, so the other parties know and can prepare? Who will they be?
They might be. I don't know for sure. But the two that said they were available was the land planner who did the fiscal impact study and the landscape architect.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so February 15th is the board. Good at 6:30 on that night? Okay? Okay. That was too easy. The- The other date I have is February 21st, which is a Wednesday. Okay, one commissioner's unavailable.
What's the name? Twenty first.
February 21st, which is a Wednesday. No?
I'm not available.
Okay. All right, let's move on to February 29th.
Good thing it's a leap year. I said, "Good thing it's a leap year."
Yes.
It's an extra day. Are you available the 29th?
29th, Mr. Marlier?
That was one of our good dates.
I believe my in-laws are in town for my oldest's birthday. He was two hours- I was debating whether to joke about it.
Work calls.
The poor kid's got a birthday on the leap year.
Yeah, he was two hours away from being a leap year. That would be tough for me, the 29th.
29th doesn't work, okay? Now, the board meets on the 26th of February. How about the 27th? Tuesday, the 27th. Peggy tells me we can move the police academy meeting, Citizens Police Academy, out of this room.
Oh, I like that.
And we could try the 27th. The board has a meeting the day before. 27th, George?
Double checking. For some reason, I don't have that as one of my available dates. Is somebody in our group not available?
We can put down as a maybe.
Mr. Lambert, you available?
I have a conflict that night, but I can see if I can resolve it.
Okay.
But you were available the 29th. Oh, I thought you didn't want to be with your in-laws.
This is all off the record.
Of course, and it was a joke. It's not true. It's a joke.
And it's not true.
27th is tentative for George, Mr. Brosman, and Mr. Lambert. Noah, Mr. Marlier, you're-
The 27th.
Okay. Yes.
We have more dates from Peggy.
Yeah, I think we do.
We have March 7th. March 7th is a Thursday. Okay.
I'm gonna try to resolve the 27th.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna hold the March 7th, too.
Okay, good.
If we have to revisit that, we can do it on the 15th of February. But just tentatively, right now, we have the 15th of February, 27th of February, and tentatively for March 7th.
On which date? Oh, okay.
Okay, so just for tonight, the hearing, let's go back on the record, I guess. Mr. Marlier, you okay, March 7th?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brosman, March 7th?
Let me check one last.
Assuming you don't get done before then?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go-
That is good.
We're gonna go back on the record. So the hearing tonight will be continued to February 15th at 6:30. We have also tentatively scheduled February 27th at 6:30 and March 7th at 6:30. We will announce those dates. The board will announce those dates on the 15th, in case anything changes between now and then. But for tonight, we'll continue to February 15th at 6:30. Any questions from anyone else? Come on up front, please.
I just lost track a little bit at the beginning. Is the documentation for the 15th's meeting all released now in this new batch of documents?
Yes.
All of the land development and all of those, everything is current?
It'll be available at the Township Building.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
I think what you're asking is whatever they're gonna use for the 15th.
The documentation that we're going to be discussing on the February 15th has not been. Will that be available before the 15th?
No, it's not available to anybody. It's not available up here or out there.
It has to be entered into evidence.
Got it, okay, thank you.
The documents get marked and entered at each hearing. So, you know, and the way these are going, you'll have an opportunity to look at what was entered tonight, because that witness is still in the witness stand. So you'll be able to look at those. And if you have questions about that, you'll have the opportunity, so.
You have to stay there the whole time?
Yeah, no problem.
Anything else?
We're gonna call the meeting adjourned.
That would've been, that wouldn't have been right.